Put him in right now, you're good to go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I call to order the Venter City Commission meeting, July tenth, twenty twenty five. If I can ask you to rise for the flag salute. Thank you. Lisa, can I have the roll call, please?
Mr. Langgraf?
Here.
Mr. Minto?
Here.
Mayor Kribel.
Lisa, would you please read the open public meetings announcement?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in the city hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Could you please read the live stream announcement?
The city of Venter offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access as a convenience to the public. In the event, remote access is unavailable for any reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue remote access at the discretion of the city for any future meetings.
Thank you. Uh, item six, we do not have department head reports this evening, nor do.
What, do them in September?
Yeah.
I've been pushing them off and pushing them.
We have, yeah.
I think, and I might have something capital wise, at least for discussion.
Sure.
Ed and I had a good meeting today about that, so.
Okay.
Fall, we do those.
Yeah.
Capital may not be quite ready by then, but.
Do you want to do one per meeting, or do you want to have?
I think we could do one.
They can get a little. Well, we just had three elected officials looking at pipes today, which, you know, that was exciting over at our pump station, which was actually pretty exciting, but.
Nice pipes.
If you would have asked my twelve year old self if I would have been excited by pump station, I would have said no.
He was a young boy there. He was very excited about.
About a pump station? Yeah, so anyway. Yeah, it all does make the city go round. Um, so yeah, I, I can definitely get information. I can definitely have the police fire and probably September would be, or uh, would be sometime around there would be a good time to recap the beach patrol.
Okay, maybe have them come in first.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, so, uh, we have no capital discussion?
No.
How, and then, um, and then, so just so the, there see some people in the audience, this is a workshop meeting, so the, this first half of the meeting, we, um, we discuss what's on the agenda, and then there'll be a moment at the end of the first half workshop meeting. If you have anything you'd like to say about what has been discussed in the workshop meeting, that's the time where you can get up and, and speak at the, and then we launch the regular meeting, where we do a lot of their for's and what for's and vote, and then at the end of that, there's a open session. That you, if you like to speak about anything, as long as it relates to the city of Venter, um, that's helpful. We talk about it then. All right. Um, so the following items are scheduled for action, uh, at today's meeting, uh, we will have the minutes of April tenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. Correct. Uh, we will have ordinance introduction.
Mayor, we're actually going to hold on that.
Okay.
Pull that until next month.
So we're gonna.
Possibly even wait till September.
That's fine, yeah.
Parking, just the parking.
Just the parking. Right?
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, we will table the twenty twenty five dash one nine until further discussion, and then we have, um, the next will be a public hearing and adoptions. This is, uh, first item is twenty twenty five dash zero one four, and this is Boden Ordinance providing, uh, various capital, general capital improvements. This is appropriating one point eight five million dollars, uh, issuing some bonds. You have any, um, any comments?
Yeah, I think the, um, ordinance itself has a lot of detail.
The ordinance itself does.
It lists all the items.
It's distributed throughout. Lot, yeah, right, right. So these are departments across those, across the scope of city for general purpose. Um, I think there's a, a new. Yeah.
Public Works.
Public Works.
Beach Control.
Totally.
Yeah, right. So these are things that are bonded for five.
These listed in the capital section of this year's budget.
Right.
This is the ordinance that actually authorizes the spending of those things that were, uh, put together as a planning tool.
The one thing that I know, I mean, we have a, a replacement of a four wheel drive vehicle for the police department, I believe. There's things of that nature in that.
Yep.
If there's any other comments or things that people want to point out.
Dump trucks, beach mats, trash recycling containers, just going through them real quick.
Yeah.
Sewer improvements, building improvements.
Right.
It's a menagerie of things that we're gonna do to keep the city moving.
Right.
Fire hydrants.
Right, it's comparatively, um, a small, I, I hate to say a million eight is a small amount, but it is comparatively considering some of the things that we've done. But it is all bonded and, and financed.
And you, you actually just combined the two? There's two ordinances that are both on for public hearing. The first one is the general improvements. Second one is the water and sewer capital improvements. That, that's where the fire hydrants are. So there's actually two ordinances. The things you just described are located in one or both.
Correct. Great, thank you. And similarly, there's a, uh.
And I don't, I don't mean.
No, go ahead.
I don't mean to interrupt, but just so that the record's clear, we, we have not borrowed anything yet. These ordinances authorize us to borrow funds to do these projects, and it authorizes bonds and or notes. And so typically, we do short term financing through bond anticipation notes that are loans that are only good for one year, and then you either roll those over or eventually go to a bond sale where you do permanent financing, and you'll recall last month, we did that with most of the outstanding debt that we had. This now authorizes new stuff. This has not yet been funded, so, but it authorizes us to do bonds and or notes to fund these things.
Okay. Understood. And, and similarly, the, um, the second ordinance, ordinance, um, twenty twenty five dash zero one five is, uh, various utility capital improvement. So that's the, that's the utility capital at four hundred thousand dollars.
Lended them, sorry.
Right. So, and, and the description that Commissioner Langgraf had mentioned. So, um, moving on, uh, the next item is twenty twenty five dash zero one six. Uh, this is a, a mending article, one seventy one, uh, or chapter one seventy one, article three entitled Acts Constituting Disorderly Conduct, and one seventy one dash seven entitled Hours of Construction Regarding Pile Driving. Did you want to add any comments to the pile driving?
Yeah, what this does, it allows midweek pile driving during the summer, um, specifically targeting, uh, help with bulkheads.
Right.
Um, we've had some bulkhead and contractors come in and trying to get permits, and we had stopped that a few years back. Um, we're realizing that that was probably a mistake to not allow that to occur.
Right.
Because we've got some bulkhead, private bulkhead projects ongoing right now, that if they don't have a bulkhead in place, it's a problem to get a storm.
I see.
So.
Not just the safe, not just the, the work stoppage, but the, the safety.
Right, and it also, the, the process of driving these piles is a lot faster now. They'll do a project in a day. Okay, in three, four hours, get them in halfway, drive them the rest, and they're, they're good to go. Still not allowing them on, on Mondays, Fridays and weekends and holidays.
And that's where the disorderly conduct comes into play.
It's the penalty.
It's the penalty for it. That's just the verbiage.
Right, we're just changing, we're not changing the penalty, we're just changing the, the days that they're allowed to do it.
Right.
And that's midweek.
Right. Got it. All right, so the language is there.
Yep.
Um, next is twenty twenty five dash zero one seven. This is, um, uh, public hearing and adoption of the bicycle, roller skates and skateboards. This is our hours on the boardwalk, which we talked about last meeting, which, um, memorializes our addition of evening hours. So this is on weekends, adding, um, from a five to ten hour boardwalk bicycling hours, which was in a way already being used that way, but, um, uh, this allows us to, uh, to, to memorialize it and also to let people know that they can use the boardwalk as another mode of transportation in the evening hours. Next is twenty twenty five dash one zero one eight. Um, this is, uh, hearing and adoption of outdoor dining and premises expansion permits. We discussed this as well last, um, last meeting. This discusses the walkways and the, um, the allowances for outdoor dining, right? Any comments?
No changes there. Just makes it permanent. That was part of what the governor allowed during.
Right, right.
That would have gone away this summer, end of the summer, I think. Uh, so we're making it permanent.
Right, so this is now, 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 now it's part of our, or, uh, obviously it's part of what people enjoy at the beach, and it's also something that, um, we had to do to, to allow it to continue.
Yeah, and Mayor, just one more addition on that. That actually was codified by the legislature as well. So what we're really doing is following the, what the new law says that the municipalities are permitted to do now.
Great, great. It's, it's, um, it's, um, I think, uh, something everybody can agree on. And, and it also, um, codifies the walkways to stay, uh, clear for a handicap. Resolutions and contracts. So this is going to be by consent, just meaning that they're gonna be all grouped together in one vote, uh, and I'll go through the items. Um, uh, first is twenty twenty five dash two two zero. This is, um, authorizing no parking and suspension of open containers during special event funky pickle, Venter Classic on July twenty sixth, and if necessary, the rain date of July twenty seventh. So this is something.
Just as a heads up to Maria, I will not be here this year for that. So you're gonna have to partner up with the mayor to take on Margate to keep the commissioner's cup.
The commissioner's cup is in my office, if you are willing to, uh, to appoint a ringer of some kind. If that's allowed?
I don't know.
We can swear someone in for the.
Yeah, right.
For the event? So that, that Lance and I won that from the city of Margate last year, so. All right. We'll swear them in for the day. Oh, right. All right, so we'll, we'll make sure we cover that important.
Need to embarrass myself.
Um.
Can do that.
You don't need to, you don't need to schedule an embarrassing appointment.
I think the fire department plays their police department in our public works. It's a whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, we go through the departments and, um.
Fun day.
Yeah, it is. So it's a really good event, brings a lot of people out, um, and it makes that, it really energizes that, that area. Moving on, resolution twenty twenty five two two one. Um, this is authorizing disposal of surplus property. So we have a handful of, of property from various departments that's getting auctioned off. Surplus. Um, twenty twenty five dash two 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 is a resolution authorizing purchase agent to publicly bid the custodial and sanitation services for the city of Venter. So this is, uh, this is actually the, the, this building, um, the, the annual contract is being put out to bid again for, uh, for, in, for the janitorial service here. Uh, twenty twenty five dash two two three is requesting approval of special items of revenue, revenue and appropriation. Do you have any, um?
And that third grants, things that we have to recognize. The first one is, uh, for the alcohol education.
Alcohol education?
Nine hundred and eighty dollars and eight cents.
Right.
Think it's, uh, related to, to.
Chapter.
And private programs, um, having to do with, let me see, what is this?
Care?
For fatal crashes project, two point one, or twenty one hundred, I'm sorry.
Twenty one hundred.
Yeah, so this would be police.
Right. Um, so this is care pack. This, this is, uh, um.
Deduction enforcement for fatal cra.
Fatal crashes.
So I'm sure you're familiar with it.
Yep.
Right?
Do we do every year?
Yep. Thank you, Lisa.
All right. Um, next would be, um, F, F, sorry, I'd lost my place. Uh, this is, uh, twenty twenty five dash two two five issuing of a tax refund, which is, um, pretty commonplace. Uh, twenty twenty five dash two two six is, uh, accepting the retirement of Tom Halpin. Uh, his last day will be on the thirtieth of this month. Um, he's a, uh, has, has, has been a, uh, his career has spanned many years here. I'll, I'll get the, the details, um, and I plan to visit him on his last day. He's just a, uh, a, a, he had a perfect fit for the, um, for the fire prevention side of this, uh, worked mostly with businesses towards the end, and he's trained. Um, he inherited that office and has made it much more, uh, efficient and effective, brought in, um, uh, uh, the, the issuing of, uh, of, you know, it is part of his job, issuing fines on a mobile way that, uh, saved the city lots, uh, in, in time and in, in stamps, basically, over the, over the years, things like that. He's just a, he's just been a, a pleasure to work with and, uh, and, and, uh, held the, held the line in terms of safety, public safety for large restaurants and, 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 and events. So I, I wish him well in his retirement.
Agreed, not an easy job.
Not an easy job.
Not well liked by some, some folks that don't want to follow the rules.
Right.
And then Tom was the guy that, that made you follow the rules.
Yeah.
What he needed to do in that job, you're protecting life and limbs.
Yep.
And, and properties as well, so.
You look at things differently when you know that people have to evacuate a restaurant in the, in a, in the un, in the, in unlikely event, but that, that's those unlikely events that, um, he's protecting us from. So I wish him well in his retirement.
Tom also sat on the planning board with us too.
That's right, yep. Brought in a lot of, uh, good information to the planning board. Um, twenty twenty five dash two two seven, uh, will be appointing Joe Inazelli as fire official. So he'll be taking Tom's place. He's already been, um, uh, on the planning board with us, but he will be the, the new fire official in that department. Joe as well has a great rapport with all the businesses. Um, both of these gentlemen are, have a, have a, a way about them that, um, that, uh, can't, that, 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 um, really get, really gets the message across that they are, they are there to enforce the fire codes of the city. I appreciate what they do. So looking forward to working with Joe in that new position.
We can actually see him in all of our events.
That's right.
There's a food truck there with a gas tank or any kind of cooking. They're there.
That's right.
So they're, they're there before they even open up.
Yeah. Um, twenty twenty five dash two two eight is, um, okay, so this is, uh, authorizing a purchasing agent to publicly bid the boardwalk reconstruction project. So this has been a long project for you, Lance.
Yeah.
Seen it through.
So we're still finalizing some things, but this will authorize us in the next couple of weeks to go out for this bid. Uh, we want to try and award this soon as possible to get construction started at least somewhat this year. Um, and into the spring. We won't do this during the summer. We'll come to a stopping point next spring before Memorial Day, and we won't finish, but we'll, we'll have a stopping point. Um, right now, we're picking some details, lights. That's become a big thing with Ed and I working on the lights.
Right.
You know, do we want to keep the thirty five foot tall ones? Do we want to have lower ones?
Right.
Problem there is if you have a two story home and how the light is right in front of you at twenty four feet.
It's right in your window.
It's right in your window, so. But at thirty five feet, sometimes the boardwalk's not quite lit well enough.
I agree.
So we're trying to find a happy medium.
Yeah.
So we're, we, we walked today and looked at some locations, um, as to where the lights might be added. We have a, uh, a lighting, uh, expert on the, on the team that's designing it for us through De Blasio's engineering company, and they'll be giving us some recommendations. We're, Ed's gonna go back to him, give us some more. You know, do we want more poles with lights closer together at a lower level, or do we want to keep them up high and make them brighter, which is not always the best idea?
Yeah.
So.
That's also might not be good for the wildlife, right? Or.
Well, it'll help the, you know, the owls and stuff catch the bunnies at night, so. Foxes, yeah. Um, so that's, we're working through it.
Go, can you tell me then this is going from, from where to where?
We're gonna start at Jackson, and we, so we got seven hundred and fifty million, seven point five million dollars from the state, um, to do as much as we could. That would have gotten us about halfway from Jackson to the pier. So then last year, we authorized another seven point five to get us the rest of the way to the piers. That does about half of our boardwalk.
Okay, Jackson to the pier.
Yeah, that's where we're gonna try and get to. Uh, we think we can with those dollars, and this isn't just decking. This is the entire boardwalk. This is pulling up, piling. This is everything. It'll be a totally new boardwalk. The, most of those piles been in the ground since nineteen sixty four.
Hmm.
So they're, they're, they're in rough shape.
You're not remodeling because you're choosing to remodel. You have problems.
We have, we have failures every year in these pilings and, and the underpinnings to the boardwalk. It, it's, if you look at it from a level, it's up and down, and it's because the pilings are starting to fail.
So it's become necessary.
It's become necessary, yeah. And we applied for a grant with the state and got, you know, we were one of the few communities that got money from, from the governor, from the state, which was nice. Um, and, you know, we'll have to find money to do the rest of it in the coming years, because it's needed. It's needed.
I would, I don't know if it's part of the conversation, but I think there's, as our city grows, the boardwalk is so active during certain periods of time that in, in years past, there used to be, uh, center lane line and arrows pointing directions on which way.
Yeah, there was a bike run lane in the middle on each side with directional arrows, so people who were biking or running would be in the center.
Right.
And then we can look at that, um.
Just from my point of view, when you see people, um, what, the, the busier it gets, the more congested it is if people are walking head on into, on, on the right hand side. But it's not.
Even, even when they had those there, there were people.
They still did.
Or across right down the middle, so.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
You know, I, I get it, um.
Yeah.
Don't want to be single file. The boardwalk's really kind of narrow to have lanes like that.
And it's only, it's only a problem in the summers and.
I would definitely be, uh, you know, have arrows.
I think, yeah, would be a good, would be a good. Not lanes, but arrows.
Yep.
I, that's great. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Um.
One last thing, we did decide not to go with the herringbone.
Oh.
Just saved us so much money.
Yeah.
Lumber and, and labor. This wood that we're putting down is E-Pay, I-Pay, E-Pay, potato, patato. Um, the labor is labor intensive to install this, this material.
Right.
So if we don't have to cut as much, we can get, you know, planking to go straight instead of angled. Look, I'm a fan of the herringbone, but it's just was, it was a fifteen to twenty percent savings.
Yeah, yeah.
On a fourteen, fifteen million dollar project, that's significant.
Yeah.
So we've already purchased the lumber.
Right.
Purchased all the decking already. We did that with the, with the state's money, because we have to spend that money by December of next year, end of December, so.
You're, you're doing the right way. We, we purchased the material ourselves, so that took the markup away from any potential bidders, and also, it also spreads out the construction over time, which helps us to, to, to pay for it over time, and then, um, and then I, I did a, a straw poll. People would, would it really, would you rather have fifty percent more boardwalk new?
Right.
Or the herringbone, and they all, to a person, they've all said.
Kind of did.
Rather have fifty.
There was a few that wanted the herringbone, said, you're gonna pay me the twenty percent? You, you and your buddies want to get together and chip in, and they're like, how much would that be? And they said, no, immediately.
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, it's not to be, it's not to be trifled with. It's worth, it's good. Those are decisions that, you know, that I think help, help us spread the, spread the dollars.
And we've got a design team in De Blasio that has done this in other towns.
Great.
Done Wildwood, um, I think they did, they did something in Cape May, that's not wooden, but they've done some work down there, other, other shore communities with boardwalks.
Okay, great. So also in your wheelhouse, uh, twenty twenty five dash two two nine is a change order for the Somerset Avenue sanitary sewer replacement.
Right, that, that project came out great, um, all new sewer lines, water services out there. Uh, it's a decrease in the contract of forty four thousand dollars.
Great.
Um, so that was a good project out there and got new sewer and water lines and.
Glad to hear that.
And two new blocks of paved streets, so it's always nice.
Amazing, yep. Twenty twenty five dash two three zero is renewing our membership in the Atlantic County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. Um, any comments on that? I think it's been something that has been a benefit to us, uh, in just, not just the training, but in the coverage. We won't, we see eye to eye on things, but it's been a great, um, uh, savings to the city, uh, in the long run. Um, so that's a renewal. Twenty twenty five dash two three one is, uh, releasing the performance bond for Venter Avenue and Little Rock paving project for, uh, an associate, uh, Kalamar Associates in the amount of twenty five thousand five four zero, so that's a large, um.
Yeah, what we do is, once they finish, we inspect it, and then we can, we, they have to post a bond for it.
Right.
This was private work.
Right.
So project that, that someone else did.
Someone else did, yeah. That's what I mean, it's a large one. Um, twenty twenty five dash two three two is, um, this is authorizing seasonal part time employment as a recreation, for a recreational aide, right? So this is moving forward with another, with an aide.
Do we, do we still need camp?
Camp counselor.
One more we need? Oh, that's it, we're good? Okay.
Yeah.
Looking for another side of work, Maria, thinking.
I forgot to post it, and I was sharing it, so.
Right.
Stop sharing.
Stop sharing. Yeah, that's right. We were both, uh, reposting that. Um, so I think we're all fully staffed now. Um, and then, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash two three three is authorizing seasonal part time lifeguards, uh, for the city of Venter. So this is the new hires. Um, then we have twenty tw, did you want to?
Just, just to also point out, this also provides for a salary adjustment for Senior Lieutenant Megan Holland.
Great.
With, uh, the movement at the top with, um, Chief Bergman's retirement and Chief Funk's elevation. Uh, Lieutenant Holland takes on some additional responsibilities, and, uh, accordingly, the chief has asked for and recommended a salary increase, and that's included here as well.
Right.
So it would take her to thirty three dollars per hour.
That's fine. Yep, Megan does a great deal for the, not just for the, uh, she runs that entire junior lifeguard program. She's a real asset there. If you ask any of the other guards, she's the, she's the one who really runs the mechanics of the city. And then I, as I see here, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten new guards, uh, coming on, um, for this summer. Um, I had a chance to talk to them on their first, uh, roll call. Always, always a good, um, uh, good, good group of athletes and, uh, and, and, and they really are ambassadors for us as well.
Rumor has it you were out there training with them.
That's why.
Video of that.
That's, that's why I have a leg wrap on, yeah, because I'm apparently not eighteen anymore. But, but I held up in the, uh, in the calisthenics, not the run. And, uh, but anyway, yeah, nobody wanted me on their team after that, so I don't understand.
Great school.
Yeah.
Picture.
No, it was a lot of fun. It was good, good. It, it's a, and, and, and actually, it's a one, it's the one, one summer job where they, they encourage you to have physical, uh, they, they, they carve out, uh, an hour of physical fitness for each guard, as long as the, the, they can manage the, because there's three people in every, every stand, and they can, because you need these individuals to be in top condition. They, they need to be over and above. Some, sometimes you get complaints that are why they are working out, you know, our kids are in the water, but they're always manage, they always manage the beach, and they, you, you want them to have physical activity every day. Um, because when they need it, they need it. They need to get out in the water quickly. Um, so anyway, it's a, a hundred percent confidence in the way that, that department's run. Moving forward, that was, um, June twenty five.
Two thirty four.
Two thirty four is, thank you, uh, resolution, um, this is a revocable license for encroachment into the city's right of way. Um, between, um, uh, city of Venter and Victor Pataglia regarding property located at eight North Victoria Avenue. I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, Ed reviewed it. They request, I think this was steps, I think, because it's an elevation.
Okay.
Um, they need, as these homes go up, they don't have room on the properties to put, to get stairs into them, so.
So, so it's just a frontal, the front.
Yeah.
The front.
And what they do is.
Not an actual piece of property.
They have to survey, provide us a legal description. Our city engineer reviews it and then does a recommendation, and we don't put it on the agenda until we get that recommendation, so.
Okay. All right. Um, resolution, uh, twenty twenty five dash two three five is a refund of some camp fees that weren't able to be used. Uh, fair, simple enough. Twenty twenty five dash two three six, um, is.
Mayor, just, just, just again, just for, so that we're crystal clear, what happened with these refunds on the camps is that the camp leaders that, uh, lowered their fees, and people had paid the fee that was originally posted, so they're getting a refund.
For the difference.
About.
Okay. Fair. Um, moving forward to twenty twenty five dash two three six, uh, this is something that we all agreed upon, uh, to prohibit, uh, opposing legislation, that prohibits beach tags for beach access. So this is, and if any, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I've been, I've been following this, and, and, uh, there's a senator from up north that doesn't seem to think that beach tags are, are needed in our, in our shore communities. Well, they don't pay for everything, but last year we collected, or this year we collected three hundred and seventy four thousand dollars in beach tags. Last year was four hundred, so that's two pennies on our tax rate to help us maintain our beaches with raking lifeguards. Doesn't cover everything, but it helps offset those costs. Um, user fees is what they are.
Right.
If you're gonna use something, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for it because we have to maintain it. Um, so there's, there was a push, and this one was even more ridiculous. It said, this has to deal with surfers. Surfers, we don't bother. If you're in the water, we don't go out there and chase you down for your beach tag. But if you're surfing for an hour and you come sit on the beach for two hours, three, four hours, whatever, you have to have a beach badge.
Right.
Um, this was to say that, you know, at recreation beaches, which, how do you enforce that? Where's, where's a beach that no one swims? Granted, you know, I, I sit at the surfer's beach, and when I go in the water, I go down to the lifeguard and we go in the water down there. But the surfers are going in and out, but they sit on the beach all day. When the waves come up, they run in. So the guys in the morning, they don't have to have, you know, there's, there's a faction with the waves are up in the morning or in the evenings. Guys will run down there and go, they don't need beach badges. If they're just going in the water. But if you're gonna set up a chair and then sit on the beach and. But if you're gonna set up a chair and then sit on the beach and on a towel or whatever, we think you should have a beach badge. And, and just to try and enforce that would be.
Yeah.
Impossible.
Right.
So we're, we're, we're looking to oppose that, that, um, legislation.
I think also perhaps not having beach badges can cause, um, big groups to hit the beach for parties also.
Right.
You know.
So there's a little bit of, of, uh, of, uh.
It's, you know, after, after.
Right.
Type of thing.
Possibly.
Wildwood, Wildwood has free beaches, right? The issues that they have on their gatherings down there, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think just, I, I don't think, to me, it doesn't go any deeper than the fact that it's a user fee and that, you know, uh, we try to be as, as, as conservative with our, our, our incomes as we can. Try to bring in more revenues that are not just on the taxpayer, and this is one of them. So.
And our beach badges are pretty reasonable down here. You go up to deal, they're eighty dollars a season.
Right.
Per person.
Right.
That's another good point, Tim. I, I know sometimes people, if you look at social media, why do I have to buy a beach badge? I collect, I pay taxes here, true. But if, if you don't have beach badges, then you don't have everybody visiting paying the beach badge also. So then it's solely on the taxpayer.
Right.
To fund lifeguards and anything else having to do with.
And everyday tripper that the use that, 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 that the beaches get are solely on the taxpayer. So it's, 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 it's not too hard to justify.
We're not allowed to, I think, under green acres, is it, to charge one group and not charge another group?
Correct.
That's acres. I think that's just state law.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't charge one group more than another.
It's a, right. It's equal protection under the law.
Yeah.
So, um, I think we're all in agreement that we oppose the legislation to, that, that prohibits, uh, beach badges. Um, and then the last resolution, uh, by consent is twenty twenty-five, two-three-seven. And this is extending the janitorial maintenance contact with the existing provider so that we can have a gap in between. Um, whomever wins the next contract and the end of their contract, extending it through August thirty-first. All right. Any questions? Any of that?
No.
And then we'll have bills and payroll. Uh, we will have this some, one discussion item and.
We're gonna move that into.
At, into, into executive session. Uh, so no discussion items. Uh, we will have an executive session. So at this point, um, Venter City Commission welcomes participation of any interested organizations or individuals during the workshop period. So if you have any comments on any, any of the resolutions that we discussed so far, um, I ask you to come up to the mic, state your name and address. You have a limit of three minutes. There will be a portion at the end of the, uh, regular meeting for you to discuss anything that you like, uh, as long as it's in relation to Ventnor. But at this point, um, uh, make a motion to open public portion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. So anybody that has any interest in anything that we talked about so far. On the Zoom platform, or is there anyone that wishes to talk about any of those resolutions or? Ordinances.
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on any of the items that have been discussed so far? No.
Hearing none, a motion to close public portion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Can I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and call to order the regular portion of the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Got a motion to approve minutes of April tenth, twenty twenty-five, regular session.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call, Lisa.
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Got a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one, zero, one, nine. I'm sorry, we're pulling this ordinance. So I have a, no motion necessary. We'll move on to, uh, item eighteen. Thank you.
Nineteen.
Nine? Yeah, five eighteen.
Oh, eighteen. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Public hearing, um, can I have a motion to open public hearing of twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, for bond ordinance for various twenty twenty-five general capital improvements as described earlier in the workshop session?
I'll make that motion.
Have a roll call, Lisa?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. May I have a motion to adopt?
We gotta.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry.
Public.
Sorry. Any public questions or comments on the ordinance providing general capital? Any on the Zoom platform?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on this ordinance? No.
No. I have a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
My roll call, Lisa?
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Thank you. Now, may I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, for bond ordinance providing various twenty twenty-five general capital as described?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a roll call, Lisa?
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Kind of a motion to open for public hearing, bond ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, five. Again, this is for, uh, various capital for utility twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Anyone from the public wish to comment on the bond ordinance that is, uh, various utilities?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on this ordinance?
No. I have a motion to close public hearing on bond ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, five.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa, please.
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, five, bond ordinance as described for utility capital?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I've opened public hearing, uh, the motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, six, amending chapter one, seven, one, article three, and one, seven, one, dash, seven.
Make a motion, open public hearing?
Second.
May I have a roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Any public comment on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, six? This is the hours of construction regarding pile driving.
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on this ordinance?
No.
No.
Hearing none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, six?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Got a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, six as described?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. A motion to open public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, seven. This is, uh, uh, code for, uh, bicycles, roller skates and skateboards on, on boardwalk.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
My roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Any comments on bicycle hours on the boardwalk from anyone in the chambers or on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on this ordinance? No.
Hearing none. May I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, seven?
So moved.
Second.
I have a roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, seven.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I have a motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, eight. Uh, this is, uh, ordinance pertaining to outdoor dining and premises expansion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Any? Anyone wishing to make comment on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, eight regarding outdoor dining and premises expansion?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on this ordinance? No.
No. Hearing none, may I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, eight?
Motion to close.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa, please?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
And may I now have a, yes. May I now have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, eight?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero, one, eight.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. All right. We're down to the motion to adopt resolutions by consent. I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash two-two-zero through twenty twenty-five dash two-three-seven by consent as described earlier in the workshop.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Lisa, would you read bills and payroll, please?
So we have pay, two payrolls, June eighth through June twenty-first in the amount of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, twenty-four cents. Payroll from six twenty-two through July fifth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of eight hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and five dollars and forty-five cents. And we have bills in the amount of six million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, ninety-six dollars, sixty-four cents.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve bills and payroll, please.
Make that motion.
Second.
A roll call, Lisa?
Mr. Langgraf?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I have no announcements or safety reports. Uh, we have any commissioner comments or reports? Mayor Langgraf?
Sure. Um, just, I mean, I, I guess we've had a meeting since the stage opened up, but I might not have.
You were, yeah.
Yeah, it was at the, the first time I got to see the stage in use was on the July third, um, Independence Day celebration. Came out fantastic. Just the, the sound coming out of it is so much better. Um, musicians loved it. I talked to all those guys, uh, from the exceptions, they just loved it. Um, even our sound guy who helped us design the, the sound setup a little bit. Now, he, with bigger bands, he could move the stuff out and put it off the stage, which really helped out.
Huge.
Cause they're a big band. Um, the reception from folks was just great. With some growing pains, they were not done. Still have to do some landscaping. I talked to Rick about what we're gonna do out there with some landscaping. We're working around and we added for, um, July third and then again on July fifth, the blue mats down in front of the bulkhead there.
Sounds great.
We're gonna expand upon that for next year. I was met out there with Ed today. We're gonna do some different things there a little bit. Um, to make that a little bit better access for, for folks that, that can't walk on the sand so well. So. Either wheelchairs or just unstable. We're gonna try and do that. The, we had a crowded city for the holiday, more crowded than I've ever seen it, I think. Uh, it was just, it was great to see. And I think all departments handled it as, as good as we can. Could have. Um, PD was busy as heck. I'm sure your radio was going crazy. Um, fire department, public works was, was picking up trash everywhere and trying to keep ahead of everybody. Um, just everybody, even the folks in city hall. I mean, it was just a busy, busy week here in the city. So kudos for everybody doing what they had to do to keep us, you know, our head above water. Touching base on storms and street flooding, got a lot of issues with that storm on Tuesday night. Uh, my flight was actually delayed that night, so I came home the next night. Um, but I was getting all the phone calls and emails and things about streets flooding. When you live on an island, we do not have stormwater basins. When you live on the mainland, you have big holes in the ground that hold water, stormwater management. That's what they do. They, they hold the water back so it doesn't flood out streets. We don't have that luxury here. So our streets function as our stormwater basins. Um, we have pumps in most locations that do catch up eventually. Um, one of the capital projects we're gonna be working on is the next phase of, of Bolton Avenue. Increasing that pump as well as Fremont Avenue. If you live in and around Ventnor Gardens Plaza, you've noticed a huge difference of how the water backs up there. It doesn't anymore. We replaced the twelve-inch corrugated metal pipes that were in the ground for the last fifty-plus years with reinforced concrete pipes that are thirty inches in diameter. It moves the water faster out to the bay. As long as it's low tide, we're good. It just, it flows out. I got a call from, um, uh, Georgiana Ross. I don't know, you guys know Ken and Georgiana Ross, I think. Um, I've gotten two calls from her. The first one after the first storm, they weren't even finished the project yet. And it, it, her street didn't flood. So we're working towards making it better. But when you get an inch, two inches of rain in a, in a couple hour time period, our streets are gonna have water in them. You live on a barrier island, there's nothing we can do about that. We are trying to play catch up with them. Um, we have pumps that will pump the water out once the rain stops and the tides are down. But if the tide's up, you're pumping that same water. It's coming in, it's going out. So there's not a whole lot you can do about it. We're working on it. So we'll, we'll make things better as, as we get along. It's, it's costly, as you can see from some of the projects we've been doing. Um, lastly, um, I'm gonna attend a meeting on Monday about an update on the New Jersey PAC rules. Uh, they sent out a invitation late and we, we didn't even get it. We got it through our, one of our consultants, Jim Rattella sent it out. Um, Monday, I'm gonna, from what I understand from, from Senator Paulistina's office, it's just an update. It's not, they're not changing anything. They're gonna tell you where things sit. They have to adopt these by August or they, they have to wait till the next, next, um, governor comes in. That's what we're hopeful will happen, that they do not adopt these rules. These rules will shut down development on, along the coastline. Um, they will require homes to be elevated another five feet from base flood elevation. So right now, after Sandy, or you had to elevate, I think it was three, sometimes four feet in certain locations. They're gonna add another five feet to that. We had an application tonight for, to put steps into the street. We're gonna have a ton more of that. You won't be able to get in these homes if you have to elevate them another five feet on the islands. And it's not just single family homes that are gonna have to comply with this. Parking lots. These rules require to elevate a parking lot five feet above base flood elevation. If there's five feet of water on this island, we're not here. Nobody's parking. They're, 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 the rules that are based on false or inaccurate information, I won't say false, inaccurate information, dated information, even the college Rutgers University that put out the study recanted half of the study they put out. So it, it's, it's the DEP and they are, they, they didn't follow the legislative process to pass these rules. They went through a rulemaking process on their own and they're ramming it down our throats. Um, the governor and his, and the DEP are trying to ram it down in his last six months of, of his office, being in office. So we're monitoring it. We've objected to it with a lot of the shore communities. Uh, we've passed resolutions. We've had them here to explain to them why we object to these rules and they just haven't been listening. One of the things I brought up at the last, um, meeting with, uh, with the DEP and actually I brought it up at a DCA seminar on affordable housing. You're not gonna be able to build affordable housing in these areas because of these rules. It's gonna be too costly. So they disagreed with that. I said, well, you've got all the homeowners, uh, home, home builders in the room objecting to this because it's gonna be too costly, but you say that it's gonna work. So we've been pushing back on it. Um, and we'll, we'll see where it goes, but I'm, I'm hopeful that it does not get passed in August. Because then we'll have a different administration in either side. Whoever wins will have to, to look at it and see what they wanna do. So I'm hopeful it doesn't pass. That's all. Got on the soapbox there. I apologize.
Okay, you're, it's part of your world and I, we appreciate your take on it and your expertise, um, in looking out for the Ventnor residents.
Is there motivation for this? They actually think they're protecting?
It, it's, it's protection, it's.
Repetitive loss?
Repetitive loss, it is some of that. It is FEMA, but these go above and beyond FEMA requirements.
Yeah.
By five feet. So it's, it's almost a retreat from the shoreline. They're trying to push people back.
Right.
That, that's what I think it is. It, it comes out of, if you remember after Sandy, there were these, um, you have green acres. So there were folks who are coming out with what they call blue acres, where you would buy up repetitive loss properties and they would just be ending up the open space. There's, there's a lot of homes that, that took advantage of that. I guess they got paid out and they just left the vacant lot, tore the house down. Brigantine actually took advantage or tried to take advantage of it by putting a pump station on one, and they weren't even allowed to do that. Can't do anything with the lot. So it, it's, I think it's, it's a, it's a mixed thing, trying to reduce insurance costs and payouts, which I get, I understand that. But I think, uh, there's better ways to do it. So incrementally.
Let me ask you a question. If this goes through without opposition, then if somebody does more than fifty percent of the value of their home.
Right.
Improves it, they are required to raise their house an additional five feet above the FEMA level. So it almost puts a stranglehold on renovations.
Absolutely.
Right.
And we were one of the first towns down here to allow that, that fifty percent rule to go in effect every year.
Right.
Well, it was a ten-year thing before. So I wouldn't have been able to renovate my home under that.
Right.
A lot of folks that we see coming to the planning board wouldn't be able to do the renovations that they're, and even in the construction office without variances, wouldn't have been able to do that. Now this is gonna make it even harder.
Right.
So what's gonna happen? They're gonna tear down the old homes.
Right.
They're gonna tear them down.
Renovation could be a kitchen remodel, not necessarily adding.
Uh, yeah.
No, yeah, yeah, it could be anything that's more than fifty percent of the value. Now values have increased, but you, you add up siding and a renovation, so of prices. So the metric is, is not in the favor of somebody that wants to renovate. It's, as you say, it's either put your, keep your house in jeopardy, I guess, or not, not to renovate or to tear down and rebuild, which it seems like it's, uh, it swung the pendulum too far in one direction.
Agreed.
All right. So I appreciate you going to that meeting and voicing your concern for the city.
It's remote, so it's easy enough.
Good. Good. Uh, Commissioner, um, Mento, sorry.
Lance, you were, Commissioner Langrave, you were talking about mats for the handicap. I think we're adding two more parking spots also. Is that correct? Does that bring us to seven handicap parking spots?
Where?
At Newport.
Yeah, okay. And, and some of them are temporary, right? During, during the concerts?
There would be three on, on Atlantic Avenue. That would be temporary.
Yeah.
There's already two in the parking lot behind the library. We would add two additional temporaries there. So that would, that would give you four plus three, gives you a total of seven.
Seven, okay. Good, all right. So as, um, Commissioner Langrave was telling you, we had, um, a great concert and great fireworks and on a great new stage. And we, uh, estimated about seven to eight thousand people here.
Wow.
Uh, for the July third concert and for the fireworks that followed. It was, uh, everything seemed to go smoothly. Nobody was asked to leave. I don't think we had any issues.
Oh.
And I, it was, uh, it, it was a really great night, I, I felt. And seeing everybody enjoy themselves actually brought tears to my eyes sincerely, because it was, it was just so wonderful to see all the people come out and really enjoy themselves. And the city was really crowded. So we had three concerts the holiday week. We had the Wednesday, we had the July third where we celebrate for July fourth, and then we had the normal Saturday. So the city normally has concerts every Wednesday and Saturday through the summer. So the next event's coming up, um, let's see, what do we got here? July fourteenth is the Red Bull Surf and Rescue at Cambridge Beach from four-thirty to eight PM. So that's coming up.
That's, that's a really big event for us to have. It was originally done in Atlantic City. It's gonna be a number of different. Lifeguard, um, from all over, from all over the east coast, uh, that compete on, in, um, in really, uh, unique Red Bull, um, different events, a lot like our Gaudi's that are based on actual rescues. And they, because it's Red Bull, they, winners usually get a jet ski.
At Longford.
Or something for the city.
Long, Longford's won two, twice.
Longford's got a lot of jet skis. They have a lot of good swimmers, too.
If anybody wants to go out, watch this.
Yeah.
Is Cambridge Avenue where to go or, or can you spread out?
I think it's gonna be mainly Cambridge Avenue.
Mainly Cambridge Avenue, yeah. It will likely be filled with, uh, drones and things of that nature and lots of, lots of, it should, because you're gonna have people from all of these. I, I, I forget the number, but it's a, it's a large number of other competing events from other cities and they, in the nearby area that are gonna compete in these rescues.
And you mentioned drones. We had a visiting, someone visiting us here who has family here that did some drone footage of the, of the concert and the fireworks. And it's gonna be sprinkled on our Facebook page, I believe.
Yeah.
It's like amazing what he, what he did.
Yeah.
Um, so it's worth a look at. Then August fifth, we have National Night Out. That's moved to Ski Beach. It used to be at the, uh, library on Newport. That's from five to eight PM. On August sixth is our concert and it's also a hurricane preparedness event. That's at Ski Beach, that's a Wednesday. And then we also have the lifeguard races, races. It's a women's event, um, at headquarters on South Look Avenue.
That's on August sixth?
August sixth, yeah. And then we have, you know, we'll have a meeting, um, prior to the next set of events, so I won't give you the rest of them, but I can't believe I'm talking August. Where did the summer go?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, I don't like this.
It was terrible. June was terrible. We had terrible weather.
Yeah, I, I just can't believe we're into the middle of July just about. So, um, that's pretty much it for events. And I really don't have anything to say about, uh, finance or tax. Everything's just moving along like it normally does.
Great. Um, I'm just gonna piggyback on the fourth of July, third of July. The, uh, the police department, the fire department worked together seamlessly. They really kind of, uh, figured out how to keep the, the pier as the ideal location. Uh, we had five officers manning that section. Um, took almost two hours to load everything and then we, uh, closed off the second gate and reopened the pier for the public. We, uh, the police department took care of making sure that the public was notified on, uh, social media that it was back open. And then, uh, helped facilitate the unloading. The fireworks was also a second, the second location that, um, we had, uh, all of our, our specials and another four additional officers, uh, called in to make sure that the, um, the concert was cleared and maintained in, in a safe manner. Um, and then the fire department, of course, uh, was there to monitor everything. They pull hose just to make sure in case anything happens, uh, on the boardwalk. So we've really kind of ironed out that and I think it made a great location to view the fireworks. But the weekend itself, as everyone said, um, was very busy. We had over the long weekend, four hundred and seventy-six, uh, total cases, uh, a hundred and six motor vehicle stops, twenty car accidents, ninety-six parking issues. And some other, and that's on top of the normal issues that we deal with of, um, in the, in the police department. Or in addition to, um, we had a number of speeding complaints that we, um, on, um, uh, on Dorset Avenue and, uh, and Winchester, which were, um, uh, due to call, due to volume. Five radar details were generated on that. Only one reported violation. Uh, we had a number of smoking on the beach, um, calls. We've been actively trying to, um, keep the smoking on the beach, um, curtailed. There've been some specific beaches where people have called about that, so we're creating a detail to go there. But we ask people if they do have a problem with that, that to call in, uh, um, the non-emergency line. And, um, yeah, and then, um, a number, as I said, of, uh, ninety-six in three days of parking issues. Parking was definitely a issue over the weekend, but overall, no real major issues, no major accidents that were, that were large. Yeah, that's what I said, twenty accidents. Um, one right in front of my house and down the road, a bumper off of one of the police cars got hit the same, third time for that same particular car. So it's, it's a busy town that I don't think, uh, our bike patrol, uh, active on the boardwalk, six bike patrol cases. Uh, for, uh, for, for, for the specials that are, I think, uh, showing that. But I, but like you all got, um, a lot of great feedback from, uh, their, their, the police, uh, presence and, um.
I think, I think there's been more of a presence with them out there this season. Or maybe I'm just paying attention more, I don't know, but I'm seeing the police, your police.
No, we.
See them everywhere. There's more at the concerts, there's more on the boardwalk.
Yeah, no, we, we, we increased the, the specials this year. It's more, there, there are more, there, there, there are more shifts of the specials, which are the first line for people there, for the, for the, for the, the types of, um, uh, you know, the, the quality of life things, like the smoking and the boardwalk and the, and parking, so.
Friendly, but of course I'm not riding an electric bike on the boardwalk or with my dog for a walk. They're, they're very friendly.
They, yep, we train them.
Yeah.
We train, they, they're definitely go through a training period and they have a, a great, um, a, a, a great system of training. They're one of the, you know, they, they're trained to deal with the public to make sure that they're professional and they're our, um, they're, you know, they're ambassadors. So I thank you for that. I just took two other things to talk about. One, police department related. We are already in the process of creating a substation out at our firehouse department. That's going forward. I think it's a very, very easy lift to have, uh, a dedicated workstation for two, for them to be out of the weather. They're prepared for emergency bridge closures. They also have the ability to have lunch breaks and, uh, facility out there when they need it. We always have two officers out there, but this gives them a home base. And it's, works within the fire department's, uh, station too. So we're manning that with some desks. We talked about, yeah, and so now it's, now it's, now I think it's really gonna make a, a, a good convenience for them. And especially since the, the, the activity has increased around the, the, the plaza, it's an opportunity for them to be close by. But, uh, as it coincides with the issues we're having with the bridge, not that, uh, so I think it's, it's important that we, uh, we have them out there if necessary. But right now, as everyone may have seen, the, the Dorset Avenue Bridge is currently in the down position. And the county is working, um, to fix the mechanical issues, uh, and, um, and I wanna support, um, Danny Levinson on his, uh, approach to restoring that bridge and not replacing it in his statement. I think it, 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 the, the bridge itself, I think, has some character that I really, um, that appeals to me, but the funding that it would take and the lift to, to, to replace, uh, a bridge of that type. Uh, I think it's a, uh, it's a, it's much more, uh, it's would be in close to, in the, in the, in the tens of millions of dollars. Where.
In his notice, I think he said it would, it would be inoperable for two years.
Inoperable for two years.
The Heights and Ventnor would be like two separate cities, like, you know, can't, can't go over the bridge for two years. You're going to Atlantic City to get over and as much as a hundred million dollars.
Eighty-five to a hundred million dollar estimate. Where they can put it in their capital plan, have it repaired over time and, um, and then also, uh, create some maintenance and upkeep on it that I think it's needed as well. But it's architecturally a very attractive bridge, I think, and, um, and it's the, it's the right decision for the scale of that space.
Besides the mechanical, I know you reached out to the county executive about maintaining it a little bit better, cleaning it, and they're bidding that out right now.
Yeah, so it'll be power washed, painted, new roofs.
Yep.
And then the railings will be painted. I, I mean, they asked me about the color and I thought the light blue would, good. So I said, keep it.
You're the color guy.
Faded light blue, I thought.
Faded, faded light blue.
Yeah, match the faded light blue. So anyway, that's a lot, um, but that's all I have for updates. If anybody, anybody else?
Thing, because I know this comes under you and, and Rick is here. It's just, it's very impressive how quickly these areas get cleaned up, Ski Beach and Newport after a concert. It, it's like nothing ever happened there. So that's very impressive.
I saw Doug, like, Douggy, I think there was three of them running around.
So we have minimal, um, less to do app, but we can do throw a lot of resources out and then we're so fortunate that we are frequent to attending these events that are mindful of the conditions, right? And my work in other jurisdictions, it's not the case. So we try to maintain during as best as we can and we hit it really hard. So every day is a different, okay, we don't feed, nobody goes home. Both the conditions are perfect, you know, for the, the people that make that space the next day.
It shows.
It does, thank you. All right. Any other comments or commissioner comments?
No.
Or reports?
No.
I have one. Very, very briefly, everybody probably is aware, uh, that the library's been closed for a couple of weeks due to issues with the AC system. Uh, those repairs now, I believe, are almost completed, uh, and it's anticipated that the library will probably reopen on Monday.
Great.
Yeah, I got that update today. I should have said something. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, great to hear. Any other comments or reports for commissioners? All right. Um, at this time then, we can open up, uh, for public comment. This is, uh, open up for public comment on anything related to Ventnor. Um, so kind of a motion to open the floor to public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, may I roll call, please?
Commissioner Langrave?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes, so if you have any comments you'd like to, I, we just asked that you come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And, uh, we, if, uh, we typically have the limit to three minutes so that we can keep the commission moving, even though we've talked for more than three minutes ourselves. But please step forward and state your name and address.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
I like the bridge, too. Uh, my name is Jerry Claus. I live at eleven, uh, North Derby Avenue. I also have business in town. I have peace pie at seventy-three. That's why you know me.
That's right.
I'm here tonight with my neighbor, some of my neighbors, to respectfully ask you to consider taking an action that we think would be really beneficial to the neighborhood and the part of Ventnor that is just south of Dorset Avenue. Got a handout, if you don't mind.
Nice. Thank you.
So. In two thousand and five, Ventnor, um, gave a revocable license to the pier, the piece of Derby Avenue that is at, right at the bulkhead.
Right.
Okay. Uh, it was given to Nicholas and Joan DeFeo, who owned the property at that time. It natural, it legalized the use that they had in the property for years and years. That property, that house was actually built in eighteen ninety. It was built thirteen years before Ventnor was Ventnor. Uh, so clearly at that time, what Derby Avenue was or wasn't, was probably in some dispute. At the time, the, um, use that they had, which is one of the pictures there, um, and have it here. Um, was basically a lawn. And.
Was basically a what?
A lawn. And the quote, quote for it was DeFeo's repaired the city bulkhead. Things went along, everything was fine. And in twenty twenty, they sold to Joseph D'Angelo. And Joseph D'Angelo wanted to build a large house there. And part of his process was he had to raise the bulkhead, so he had to replace the bulkhead at that point, bringing it up to, I believe, nine feet. And probably at that time, uh, you guys had to sign off on that because again, he was replacing some of your bulkhead. It is a revocable license that goes month to month. It can be revoked within thirty days. And it is, um, just to be used theoretically for passive use. Somewhere between the time that D'Angelo owned it and today, forty-two pilings have been put in that area. This is a.
You have that in here?
Yeah, it's in there.
Oh.
Barbara took all these, made these, so we gotta use.
Well, that's not right.
Okay. Obviously, there was some idea that there would be a change of use. These pilings were driven without any permits. There's no DEP permit or any city permit. You know, uh, success has many fathers and orphans or failures in orphan. These pilings are orphans. But irrespective of that, again, D'Angelo sold the property to their gen, his general contractor, which was Perino Builder. Perino Builder has subdivided the property and he's building two houses on the property. He's, one's under construction and one is to come. Recently, Mr. Perino has put in for a DEP permit. And if you look at, um, an insert of what I had, you know, of what his permit is, what his site plan is, you will see that he has no use intended for the Derby Avenue strip of land that's under license. And the license runs with the land. So from DeFeo to D'Angelo to Perino, the license is theirs. We would like you to consider revoking the license and making it a small pocket park. Simple as that. When you think about it, it is one of the entrances to town. You come over Dorset Avenue, you make the right, you make the other right. It's what you see. At the moment, you see forty-two pilings. Not exactly sure why the pilings are there, but it's not really an issue at this moment. And again, if you look at the, uh, revocable lease, which was filed in two thousand and five, you'll see that the recipient of the lease is responsible to remove any structures on the property. So from the city's end of things, there's no cost involved in getting the pilings out. It would be Mr. Perino's responsibility to get the pilings out. And it would just be a great place to sit. People go to the end of the bulkhead there all the time anyhow, so. People go to the end of the bulkhead there all the time anyhow. So, uh, and it is a piece of property that's, you know, it's public land. Uh, it is an area, when you think about it, that is underutilized in terms of public access for the inland waterway. There's the Winchester spot that's, you know, north of Derby. Uh, there's Ski Beach, but there's nothing right in that area where you can just go sit and look at the bridge after they paint it blue. So, so you know, it, it's.
Light blue, light faded.
Light, light blue.
Yeah.
So, um, it's really a pretty straightforward thing. There's no long-term thing. There's no, there's no necessarily real cost to see. It obviously would have to get cleaned up in some way. The pilings aren't going to be pulled out completely, but they're going to have to be dug out and cut down, you know? But something's got to happen to them anyhow. So that's why we're here.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Lance, do you have any?
Yeah.
Information on this, because it's a little surprising.
I remember when they came in for the one house. I don't remember the subdivision. It might have been a buy rate.
Yeah.
It was subdivided in November of '24.
I, I agree. I remember when they came in, came in for the single large home.
Correct.
And at that time, the land, and it was described to us by our engineer, that it was simply going to be surrounding property, a lawn with no use to it.
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, that particular permit shows that.
Right.
D'Angelo's DEP permit shows that.
So these, these homes are buy rates. So was anything done incorrectly by adding that to the U?
Well, they drove piling without a permit.
Piling without a permit.
Well, he spot, well, nobody really knows when these pilings were driven. I couldn't, I can't tell you that because I didn't live there then. I can tell you that, uh, the bulkhead review form that was done after D'Angelo built the bulkhead.
Right.
Uh, was done in '22. So sometime between '22 and today, somebody put those pilings in.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Dino tomorrow.
Yeah.
I've talked, I've talked to Dino about this, and at the time, what Dino said to me, I, I first brought this question up last, I bought the house last year, so, um.
Beautiful house, by the way.
It's not bad. You did the kitchen if I'm mistaken. I was just eating there just a little while ago.
One of my favorite homes on the island.
It's a, it's an amazing home. It's an amazing home. Um, but anyway, those, it, there's no permit for those pilings. So how they got there, I have no idea. What I do know is that the recipient of the lease, according to this revocable license, I should say, is the person that is responsible for removing them. If the city decides they need to be removed, something should be done with them. They're not a part of a DEP permit and they're not part of a city permit. I opened the city records. They don't exist.
Okay.
I'll take a look at it with Dino tomorrow and, and report back and we'll, we'll try and.
But, but the real issue isn't for us, really isn't the pilings. I mean, the pilings are going to have to go one way or the other. It's the idea of just having a nice pocket park at that little spot.
I like that idea.
I do too.
Park on the other side.
Yeah, those are the current conditions. If, if you look at.
People do go sit there.
Lily parks a pump station.
There's over 40 pilots there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do sit there.
We could sort of walk over there and see.
Yeah, no, I know the, I know the corner very well and it's, um, it, it's a good idea. I, I support it as well. Um, and you, is your contact information on here so that when we do, when Commissioner Langriff?
Well, if you talk to Dino, he can get a hold of you?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I'll get it.
Yeah.
Find it out.
Before, before I leave.
Thanks for bringing this up.
Sure, I appreciate it.
And is that what the rest of the group here is, uh, I noticed some familiar faces from the neighborhood, actually. It's a small town. So if you want to just, if you did want to say anything on the record.
Uh, here, I'll understand. This, this white line that goes to the bulkhead approximates the end of the Derby to get the platform. And the other line represents the pierhead part. So the land on the other side of that is, um, subject to the final screening.
Yeah.
Just this marriage and.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but you have to say your name and, uh, or we, and your address. It's the thing.
I am Barbara Hughes Sullivan. I live at 23 North Cornwall Avenue. All of us here represent the, the houses that are on either side of the, the construction being built. So we are directly impacted by the visual, you know, and everything there.
Sure.
So I'd be happy to send you the contact information. I have everybody's. If you want everyone's, I'd be happy, or just Jerry's.
Jerry's and yours, I have yours, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm a big proponent of open space and this, we all have, uh, three-foot setbacks on our homes with, and we all manage the same five pieces of sod, you know, that we have as a lawn. So if we can give people, and we have the beaches, but there's, uh, if there's a place for us to get, um, you know, to have some open space, I'm in favor. But let's get to the bottom of what happened first. All right. Any other, uh, comments, public comments for, um, anything related to Ventnor City? Nope. Any Zoom comments?
Comment on any items? Please make yourself known.
Nope. Hearing none? Can I have a motion to close public comments? Oh, one more late entry.
Hi, I'm Peggy Kavanaugh. I live at 25 North Corn, Cornwall Avenue. Uh, I, I would just like to see a trash can in the city yard parking lot. Um, we live right next door to the parking lot and I am constantly picking up people's trash for people that like, uh, crab and, eh, whatever, you know, they pull up and they crab in the parking lot.
We'll do that.
And.
Had the thumbs up from our superintendent, so.
He's gone it.
Please, yeah.
That's an easy one.
Okay, that's my spot. And I'm also with these guys, because like, we look at that property, so.
Yeah, no, appreciate it. That's, uh, you know, boots on the ground. And, um, and again, your house, 19, uh, when was your house built? 1907? If anybody doesn't know, it was called Derby Hall. It's one of the most attractive homes in the city of Ventnor. It's a one, it was originally a clubhouse for a, for, uh, men that owns, men and women that own speedboats in the area, right? It was a, it was a, it was a clubhouse, if you will, and now it's one big giant beautiful home. Yeah. That, uh, over 120 years old?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope to make it that long.
Keep, yeah. It has good bones. So hearing no, uh, no more public comment, um, a motion to close public comment.
So moved?
Second.
Wait, there's something here.
Oh.
If they're going to come on, they gotta come on. They can't. I don't know who that is.
Yeah, so anyone in the Zoom platform, we need you to, um, uh, come online. Uh, we can open up your microphone and give your name and address if you have to, if you'd like to comment.
Good evening. Uh, this is Dave Rumsey, I, uh, from 6009 Winchester. I was just leaving a message in the chat saying that I was in support of, uh, of Jerry's, um, request. That, that's all.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
For comment. Anyone, uh, so I believe that's enough calls for comments unless anyone else has comments?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
Have a roll call, Lisa, please?
Commissioner Langriff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. So at this time, we have an executive session, um, which we kindly ask the public to leave, uh, so that, and that we have a short statement to read for executive session and the Zoom platform will be shut down.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within an executive session. As an exception to certain provisions of said law, the Ventnor City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action binding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken with an executive session, and the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted and when the public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. The matters to be discussed are potential litigation attorney-client privilege.
We're back from the executive session during the executive, oh.
Jim?
Yeah, you should take a.
Sorry. There's nobody in the waiting room, so you're good to go.
During executive session, we discuss topics covered by the attorney-client privilege as well as contract or negotiations for pending or anticipated litigation. And then that's it.
So, thank you. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langriff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes.